Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, August 27th, 2019, and it's hot outside. And, well, I guess we're having the heat of summer.
But it's cool inside.
That's it. Thank you. Let the record show that council's all here. And we had a work session downstairs, and we covered the 2040 vision. Council members, you have the minutes of our previous meeting in front of you. And do they meet with your approval?
Yes, yes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to go to visitor comment. I have Harry Blado. I have your -- yeah, you're up.
Hello, I'm Harry Blado. Live on 764 Sessions Street. Been awhile since I've been before the council asking questions. I've been just watching. I got several questions. Yearly, we were supposed to get a itemized statement of the use of the funds from the utility bills. Did I miss it this summer? Was one published? I don't recall seeing it.
What I'm going to have you do is you've given me your list of questions here. And I'm going to have you go through your questions. And some of the questions are going to get answered tonight in tonight's presentations. And I've already talked to our city manager. He's going to follow up. Staff is going to follow up directly with you to give answers to your questions. So I want to -- you're welcome to share them, but I want to make sure that --
You just want me to itemize it, and then somebody later talk about it? Somebody will talk about it?
Somebody -- well, some of the items are going to be covered in tonight's presentations. And then the ones that aren't, is that correct, Tom?
Yeah, the ones that are, we'll get back to you directly on it, make sure that you have the information here.
That was the number one. Number two is the tour treatment plant cost from $6 million to $9.5 million. I'd like to have information on that. Why, who, and what's it for? And who pays for it? And when? And then the wastewater to the farm north of the airport costs $750,000. My question there, there was a crop change from dry grass to what that required irrigation? And is a farmer going to pay for any of the irrigation water like he would if he was doing it himself? Or is the city paying for all of it? Status of the old city hall. I've seen a lot of progress there, and I just wonder what the situation is with it. I see the broken has a "for sale" sign in front of it, the same as he does in front of the Independence Station. So just wondering what's going on there. Interesting to the marijuana growing facility, which the city was so eager to approve for tax revenue, and it's for sale and no operation, no tax revenue. And the building extension across from the airport there at the east end of the building, I just wonder, the airport people, wonder what that's for? And whose facility is it? And what's the use of it? And then one other thing I'd like to have information on is the systems development charges. I'd like to have a listing for like for a year and see what they're used for. And did the hotel pay any systems development charges? Or did the city furnish all of that scot-free for them?
Thank you.
Any final questions?
Okay. I'm going to take this over right now and get the staff. Thank you, Harry. Other people? I see no one jumping up to the microphone. So, under my report for this team -- oh, before I get too far, we're going to change the agenda slightly. Staff have asked that the museum bylaws and collection policy be held over to a future meeting. The legal people want to look at it again. There's some stuff. So we will not be dealing with that one tonight. We will do that at a future time. And I'm not sure that it'll come in the future.
Mr. Mayor, sir. Do you mind just briefing us on whatever you follow up with him, like an email? So we know what you told Mr. Blado? The follow-up on these questions?
Yeah, well, some of this will be, as we mentioned tonight.
Right.
But certainly, anything we said out there, we'd be happy to copy and --
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Under my report, what I will tell you is I had a chance to visit with Denise Doyle Boyle, the new, our new senator that was just recently appointed. She used to be the representative for the other half of the Senate district. And she worked with Senator Winters for a while. I had a chance to give her a bit of a tour yesterday. She's familiar with our community, as they come over to the movie theater, they eat here, and they come to events here. She and her family, they live in South Salem. And so they know about coming to Backbridge. And so it was a good chance for her to learn more about our community. And we'll be working with her during the coming legislative session. But I didn't want to let you know about that. We have council liaison reports. And Councilor Hicks, you're the first person up with my net, please.
Yeah. I don't believe I've actually been to a meeting since my last report. We have had one, though I was out of state at the time. As far as I'm aware, the, a lot of the focus is on the G-PON upgrade, which seems to be plugging along quite a bit faster than we had originally anticipated. In fact, I just got my upgrade yesterday. So, but that's about it for right now.
Okay.
And I'm up for the next two.
Okay. You got it.
So it's been kind of a quiet summer with parks and rec. They did not have a quorum for their July meeting. And their August meeting was canceled and business postponed until September.
Okay.
So, not a lot there. Planning Commission has spent actually the majority of their summer dealing with the accessory dwelling height limits and working on code revisions. So their packets have been pretty active and substantial reading with lots of pictures, which I appreciate. There was, I believe, a height limit that was determined for accessory dwellings, 15 feet? Is that correct? I'm looking for a staff to nod. I think it was 15 feet that was decided at their last meeting?
Sorry, I was looking at a future item, so --
Sorry. Accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, Fred's not here. I don't remember exactly what they did, but they did limit the --
Okay. Yeah, and I believe it was about 15 feet or so. But that'll all come out when the code revision is done.
Okay. Sounds good. Mr. Pastor Mayor, I think it's to you.
I'm always the first one to talk on this mic, so I never know what to expect, whether he's going to blast me out, or blast you out, or can't hear me at all. So I have a couple of longish items to kind of go over tonight. So if I take a little bit more time than normal, I apologize. But there's kind of some important things I think we should cover and make sure that are discussed, especially in a public forum. First one's actually fairly short. Well, actually, the first thing I want to do before I forget is to thank Michelle for stepping in and helping out our city recorders here tonight due to illness or death in the family. And so thanks to Michelle for stepping up. Liberty Two subdivision construction. Just want to give everyone's a heads up that they are pretty much through the process, and construction will begin soon. Liberty Two is 30 lots west of Seventh Street. It will include an extension amount for Washington and Adams Streets down in that area. Kind of a second phase of what they did there not too terribly long ago. So you will see very shortly things changing. So if you get comments or reports on that, that's planned for. And they've gone through the entire process to get their approvals for that. I wanted to give a report, which is actually required by our municipal code regarding the sidewalks in front of 240 Monmouth Street. The municipal code requires before council consider a resolution that I give a report relative to the sidewalks there. And so I'm kind of going to do that at this point in time. And then later in the meeting, there is a resolution for your consideration relative to those sidewalks. Back in December of 2018, the sidewalks along Monmouth Street and Second Street were demolished with the anticipation that permits were coming and construction was going to be commencing. It's my understanding there have been some financial issues relative to that property. And the developer has not finished finalizing the permits with ODOT and city obtaining the permits, and construction obviously has not begun. That's been out there for a long time and is stated disrepair. And quite frankly, I have determined that I believe that's a hazard, not having sidewalks on an arterial street with all the traffic, pedestrian traffic and other traffic that goes through there is clearly unsafe. And it's something that I think that we need to take action on quickly. The city had an agreement with the developer to rebate $300,000 for performance on the building construction and sidewalk construction. The period to pay that rebate has expired, so the city plans to use a portion of that money to reconstruct the sidewalk. At least that's what we're proposing to do with the resolution that will be before year later. The monies were not included in the budget, as we expected to actually pay those monies out before the end of last fiscal year. So essentially, that money just ended up rolling into the Indian Fund balance and the general fund. So it's still there. It hasn't been spent. But I do want to give you advance notice that if we do spend those monies in sufficient quantity, it will either require a budget transfer, a supplemental budget, in order to use those funds down the road. I mentioned that Monmouth Boulevard is a principal arterial. C Street also has, or Second Street also has a significant amount of pedestrian traffic. There's a hazard, and without sidewalks, I will bring forward a resolution for you to consider tonight to call, to determine that that is a nuisance. And we can go through the processes outlined in our code. When we get to that resolution, I'll kind of talk about more what those steps are, and then what the future steps are. But I wanted to make sure at least you had a report of that situation before we did that. Another item that is going to be tied to a couple of different things is after a recent meeting, council directed me to take a look at properties that may be able to relocate the museum. And so I think some of that was predicated by the availability of the property on 281 Second Street that became available. But we went through a process to say, okay, well, let's just not take a look at an individual property. Let's take a look at all the different properties that are currently out there, or that we think might be able to be out there to support a museum, so that we're just not looking at one particular thing. So we did that. We had our broker kind of come up with, compile a list. We also used our internal knowledge of different things that we know that are out there to take a look at what might, what might work better than the current situation. I think everyone knows that the current building is what I call vertically challenged, to say the least. You have the restrooms in the basement. You have to go upstairs in order to get into the main viewing area. And then you have to go up and downstairs just to get to pretty much anything in the building. And, you know, we've looked and talked a lot about what to do with that building, potential retrofit, and ideas to do ADA, that's extraordinarily expensive and difficult. So I think it was a good exercise to take a look at. What the result of that analysis was, was the building at 281 Second Street was the best option out there, both fiscally and as well as space-wise. It's almost exactly what the museum could use effectively. And it's also very flat and level. So there would be none of the challenges that we have in the existing structure relative to ADA access. There certainly are improvements that need to happen in there. The bathrooms are not ADA standard, as well as, you know, it's been a building that's had many uses and all that stuff. But after taking a look at that and going through that process, we did make an offer and negotiated with the seller. And we landed a price of about $25,000 under the original asking price. And now we're in the due diligence phase. So kind of, I'll walk you through a little bit of the process here. But I want to remind you, at the end of this process, and we put a contingency in there that this would have to come back to council for your final approval, which is something that was in motion that you guys made. So anything I'm talking about here is still subject to coming back to council and making sure that you're okay with what's going on. And we may very well find out something during the due diligence period in our investigations that say we don't want to move forward with this deal as well. So this certainly isn't anything that's done in any sense of the word, but certainly we're taking steps to move this forward. We have 45 days to complete our investigations, and we're going to look at a lot of things, including the structural components of the building, electrical roofing utilities, mold led asbestos. And then also, we're going to have an environmental assessment to make sure that there isn't anything that was historically done in the building that we should know about. We'll do a Level One analysis, and then we'll do a Phase Two analysis if we determine that we need to based on the Phase One. So we'll go through that whole process. We gave ourselves plenty of time to do that, just to make sure that we can really understand what we're getting into relative to that site. I'll kind of talk a little bit about costs. So, you know, we did not have programmed anywhere purchasing property for a museum in this particular year. And so we'll have to allocate those monies at some point in time if we decide to move forward. But I kind of wanted to talk about some of the things that we've looked at. And, you know, obviously, we have an existing facility which we can sell. There's still a gap between what we believe we can sell that existing building for, and that's still kind of very squishy numbers to what that would be versus, you know, what we would be paying for this new facility. So one of the things that we're going to put on the agenda for your consideration tonight is to put the two lots on Polk Street up for sale. There's two lots that the city was given by Boise Cascade a number of years ago that were intended to be developed someday. And we're suggesting that if we put those up on the market and we sell those, we can narrow that gap down to something that's very small, if any gap at all, so to make this end up being as cost neutral as we possibly can relative to going from where we're at, where we're going. Obviously, that won't happen overnight, because we'll have to close on this deal, and then we'll have to sell the property, and we'll have to sell other properties if we do this. But that's one option for you guys to consider. It's up for your consideration. I put together a resolution tonight for you to consider that. And see if you want to go down that path, that would just be the first step in the process. Again, that would have to come back to you if we were to sell those Polk Street properties for final approval and a public hearing, so.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
The, it says it later on, and I'm not sure if it's in the memo or the resolution, but it says that the intent that Boise Cascade had was that we would sell the property. Is that written anywhere? Is that transcribed anywhere?
You know, I haven't found those documents that said that, but it was my understanding from conversations with some people who were contemporaries at the time that that was there. That was what they, I think we expressed that's what we planned to do, and I think they were fine with that. But I don't know the specifics of that, to be honest with you. I can feel, and I was around then. And there were no restrictions placed on it. They were just getting out of the community. They were closing their operation. And they had some property across the street that had some interesting houses on it at that point.
Oh, there were houses on it?
Yeah, there was, I think some, if I recall correctly, they're, you know, pretty rough, yeah, they'd run down a long way. So there was no purpose other than they gave it to us because a lot of them lived here in town over the years.
Do you have any idea how long ago that was?
I think, I think they gave it to us, was it in '07?
It was. It was not that long ago. I thought it was a long time ago, but it was, I think it's in my staff report, I think it was in 2007.
Yeah, and I think that it took a while for their corporate people to bounce things forward. It did, I think there was some delays before they actually gave, the legal paperwork was done, if I recall correctly.
And I recall, I believe, a burn to learn at that point.
Yeah, it was something like that, yeah.
The burn to learn was across the street in my old property, in the property I live in. But it's unfair to say they gave it to us to turn around and develop, I would say.
Okay. I wasn't here, so I --
Right.
I appreciate your comment. So I guess, you know, even if we are to make that gap small relative to the property purchase, I still should let you know that we anticipate there will still be improvements that need to happen to that building that are going to be, you know, fairly expensive. And I think we're hoping that a lot of that can be offset by grants and donations, but we'll have to see how that goes as we move forward. So if we do not find anything significant in our inspections, we will bring this back to council for final approval. There'll be a public hearing along with that as well. And hopefully, that will be at the September 24th meeting, but we could go to the meeting after that based on the timelines that we have as well. And then finally, I'm going to be on vacation from August 28th until September 10th.
[laughing]
Not going to give myself an extra four weeks like I did last year, to my, much to my embarrassment. So I will appoint a couple of people to act on my behalf, and I'll send out something official. But essentially, Robin will be in charge from the 28th through the 2nd, and then Police Chief will be in charge from the 3rd through the 10th. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I do appreciate the questions that we've received. Those are great questions. We'll work to answer them. I think there's a lot of good questions in there that could probably be educational for a lot of people. So we'll be happy to send those out to council and make sure that we answer what we can. Some of that, like I said, on the, was answered tonight, some more of it will still be answered tonight as we go through some of the other presentations, so.
Additional questions for the manager this evening? Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move forward to the wastewater master plan proposal. I'll flip to my pages here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about facilities planning and master plans. The last master plan the city participated in was in 2005 for wastewater. The city participated in a 2015 facilities plan for the treatment system. And we've been talking about that plan a lot because it involves the SRF loan. The 2015 facilities plan was specific to the treatment side of wastewater, not on the collection side. So when West Tech Engineering was appointed the city engineer, we took a review of that document and realized that it did not have all of the information needed for a master plan. We asked West Tech in 2018 to take a look at those sub-basins. We've talked about that document as well. And tell us if there were any gaps in that study. They identified the collection system citywide as needing some improvement. And based on the last plan that identified that was in 2005, it is time. So we requested a proposal from West Tech Engineering that they provide, and it's in your packet tonight. The new facilities plan has been in the capital improvement plan for several years, and it is cued for this year, for this fiscal year, to start. It is roughly a 20-year document that is reviewed every 10 years. And I brought West Tech Engineering, if anybody has any questions specific to the proposal. Steve Ward.
And I didn't want to cut in. Go ahead.
I was just waiting to see if anybody --
Oh, okay. This was planned into our budget?
Yes, it was.
In the amount that's shown here.
The exact amount.
Okay. Questions for the presenter or the engineer? Does that make good sense? Please do.
It's necessary.
Yeah. Yeah, there.
Yeah, and I'll say, you know, some of the cross, questions that Harry asked are related to, you know, making sure that we have the proper documents in place to understand what we're doing not only now, but in the future. So it's very timely that we get this done.
Okay. Additional questions? If not, we do have an action that we need to do on this, if someone would so do.
I move we accept the proposal from West Tech Engineering not to exceed the amount of $150,000 for the wastewater facilities plan.
The motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Everybody good? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Looking forward to that. As we discussed earlier, we're going to bypass the museum bylaws and collection policy to a future meeting. We're going to go on to the target industry analysis. Mr. Irvine. I know that, I know some people came earlier, and they were, I asked them to come by seven. It's almost seven, and so I think that's, we're pretty good here?
Yeah. Yeah. And honestly, I have to apologize upfront. I was flipping through the packet here, and unfortunately, what you have in your packet is the consultants slide deck presentation, what they presented on this a couple of council meetings ago. So we don't have the actual targeted industry analysis in the packet for you to approve or for you to consider. So if it's all right, I think what we'd like to do is, I can, I can tell you about it. I can present my, kind of what, you know, what my staff memo says, and my recommendations on this. But then we probably would have to push this to a later meeting, so you can actually have the document in front of you before you determine whether or not to approve it.
Thank you. That you anticipated some of the questions. So unless there's objection, we'll just hear an oral presentation and move this forward to another meeting. Please do.
And, excuse me, will the document that will be presented to us, will that be available online anywhere?
Yes. Yeah, we will, we'll get it up there early. And, yeah, it sounds like there was some kind of an issue with the agenda software this time, that it wasn't opening and working for some reason. So we'll do it a different way if necessary.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
So just, I mean, in summary, and, you know, like I say, you all have already seen a presentation from the consultants on this probably about a month ago. The targeted industry analysis is really a opportunity for us to examine the industrial areas around the airport and see if we can identify industries or uses that would really kind of, you know, make sense in those properties and benefit from proximity to the airport. One property in particular actually is adjacent to the airport and has potential for through-the-fence access. And so what we, what we're with the consultants to do was explore the range of possibilities, you know, kind of filter for what type of regional workforce we have, the types of industries that are, you know, don't necessarily have to be, for example, right on an interstate highway, you know, that can be potentially aviation-related or have, you know, components, be making components that are related to aviation or benefit aviation. And really just kind of see what shakes out, so that if we wanted to do a, some type of recruitment campaign, we could have the beginnings of kind of a foundation to work from to really identify what types of industry we were targeting. The other piece of this project, in many ways, it's almost the more important piece, is to really kind of work with the properties that we already, that we have here and identify, are they ready for development? If not, what needs to be done in order to get them ready for development? Because it doesn't, it doesn't matter to recruit an industry if they can't actually build in your community. So this really kind of focused largely on the property to the west of the airport, because that does have the through-the-fence potential there. But still did consider some of the other properties, including a property that's already shovel-ready on kind of Stryker Road and Hoffman Road. And so this, the analysis really kind of did a, provided recommendations on, here's the steps that need to be taken to really kind of answer the questions about this property. So property to the west, it likely has wetland issues. We don't know how much. So the recommendations are, you know, you need to figure out, work with the property owner, figure out where those wetlands are, how big they are. And then depending on those answers, there's several different potential avenues that should be pursued in order to get this property, you know, kind of prepared for development. I think the key thing for us is if there are a lot of wetlands on that property, enough to make it undevelopable, there could be, that could be a rationale to essentially do a swap, pull that piece out of the UGB and bring in a piece that is owned by the same person that has this tiled, and therefore does not have wetlands on it and could be entirely developable. That is a fairly extensive process, working with the State Department of State Lands, Department of Land Conservation Development. And you need to have a reason to start. And so that's kind of what this document is. It's kind of our, if we choose to pursue this, this is our rationale for starting this. We said we've done targeted industry analysis. We want to really kind of continue to develop job creation industries in the community. These are the properties that we have identified already for job creation. They are limited, or we believe they are limited in these ways, you know, help us determine if we need to change anything in order to really be able to provide job for this community. So I think that's kind of the fundamental piece of this, is this report, you know, adoption of this report does not commit us to anything. adoption of this report does not commit us to anything. It does not kind of make us spend money on anything, it doesn't make us kind of create new policy towards anything. It's essentially a list of recommendations that if, you know, that if we choose to, we can start pursuing some of them to try to develop additional job creation land in the community. Happy to answer questions.
Who has the, well, let me rephrase that. The property owner has the ultimate say-so on what that property is, who it's sold to?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it's, yeah. We cannot, I mean, it's private property, it's, you know, kind of with all the restrictions entailed by that, or at least as far as us being involved in it.
Counselor Cor.
I'm all for jobs growth, I'm all for working and living in the same community. I'd like to work in the community I live in, but I'd like wetland preservation to be at least the focus of this, if not the focus of this, obviously, because it's a jobs program. I get that. Also, is there going to be a public hearing at some time so that the public can come out and tell? I realize many of the public have participated in some of these meetings, particularly in the airpark, but is there going to be a public hearing of some such?
For this particular document?
Well, when we take the recommendations and we start to develop some plans, will there be a possibility for the public to be involved in that?
I would say that probably would be up to us to determine how we want to pursue that. You know, for example, a basic wetland delineation, I mean, there's no public hearing process for that. I think frankly it'll be after that step where once we know, okay, it's only a little bit, or it's a lot, you know, we are trying to figure out kind of how to manage that. I think that's where they're, depending on the avenue we pursue. If we were to do some type of a UGB swap or other sort of moving property lines around, then yes, there definitely would be public involvement in that.
Is it fair to say that most of the public involvement thus far have been airpark residents?
Majority. There was definitely at least a couple of people who weren't residents of the airpark.
Additional questions?
Yes, ultimately, this is looking at the possibilities that are available with this property and being prepared for those eventualities based on who it is sold to.
Yes, I would say it also lays a pathway if we would like to take a more active role in making something happen there.
Working with the property owner?
Yes, working with the property owner, I mean, yes.
Yeah, so we don't operate on our own.
We don't just jump in there and do something.
Right. I just wanted to make, clarify that.
But it would have impact on the city as far as infrastructure or like the wetland swap or something else, so we need to be aware and alert ahead of time.
Exactly.
Got it.
Additional questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Please do.
And this may be fleshed out in the final report, but in the constraints, it mentioned transportation access. Specify what that means?
You know, I think it's really largely that, you know, for industry, transportation means highways, and so not being on I-5 is a constraint.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing is, I was looking at the list of businesses they were kind of, you know, mentioning, and it's a nice list and everything, but it didn't seem to me that any of them really needed an airport. I mean, was there anything that was specifically needed an airport?
Yes and no. You know, a couple of things that the report did was it did some, it looked at a couple of other airports with adjacent industrial areas as case studies, you know, sort of say, okay, what have other airports done? How have they developed? What types of industries are there? So for example, Aurora and Scapus, and both of those, you know, they have a couple of industries that do need, you know, actual taxiway access to the airstrip, but they've got a bunch more industry that doesn't. You know, they either make something that's wholly unrelated to aviation, or they make, you know, the seats to the planes or the helmets or something like that, and it just, it's just kind of, it was a convenience spot for them to set up. So yeah, I think there's not necessarily a huge demand for access to the runway, you know, for a particular industry, especially honestly, that was one of the findings of the case studies was Aurora and Scapus, their runways are both significantly longer than the runways here, so not having jet access and things like that would be limiting for industry that wanted some type of, you know, kind of runway access. But still, you know, it's a, you know, aviation-related or, you know, kind of industrial next to an airport is a convenience for a lot of industries.
Additional questions? I'll be looking forward to reading the analysis, and thank you for clarifying that because that, yes.
Yeah, I apologize again for that.
That happens. Okay, we're going to keep moving. Thank you very much, Mr. Irvine. We're going to move to recycled water use facility project contingency fund. Welcome back.
Good evening again. In your agenda packet, there was a map locating where this project is. It is the recycled water use facility project north of the airpark. Last council meeting, thank you. I requested a 50% contingency for Riverview Pump Station project due to some difficulties we had underground. This project has seen rain delays, and I am anticipating that there are going to be change order requests or time extension requests from the contractor due to those rain delays. The rain delays happened a total of four times. It was pretty unseasonal for the rain, and it was unfortunate the farmer wasn't able to get his crop off of the field so he could start the contract on time. At the end of the contract for construction, we now have the agreement with the farmer so he can get back on the field and put in his crop before it starts raining again. So I have really hard dates on when that contract was to be performed and finished by. Also in that contract are severe penalties if the contractor does not perform and finish by. So due to rain delays that were uncontrollable to us or the farmer, he is requesting, he is going to request time. So I'm here to ask for that 15% contingency that was in the budget for this project as I did last time we were at council. The funds are accounted for in the state revolving loan fund, and that loan and this project were both approved by council. This project was approved by council on July 23rd. That'll give you kind of an idea of how fast we're moving on some of these projects. The project right now is only slightly behind schedule. We've made some adaptations for the contractor to help speed him along extending work hours, approving some faster methods for pipeline and such, but I anticipate he's going to ask for more days because I can't, he's going to ask for more days and it's something I can't provide. So I'm asking for the 15% contingency.
And this was figured in when we were budgeting this, we just didn't put in the contingency into the award?
That is exactly correct.
Okay, so this is.
In the future, we'll add this to the contract.
Okay, so this is not new money, this is something we'd already approved conceptually and just moving from one pile to another pile, is that correct?
Correct. We're appropriating the funds that were already approved.
Okay. Would you take a moment and review for our TV audience and those in the audience here the short line of what we're doing and why we're doing this?
The recycled water use facility was identified in the 2015 facilities plan, and it has to do with our requirements with our permit with DEQ, it's our MPDS permit, and in that permit, we can only discharge into Willamette certain times of the year. Unfortunately, our capacity on that system that holds all summer, so think of it as a swimming pool, and all of your property drains into it. If you get a lot of rain, your swimming pool's going to go over, well, DEQ doesn't allow that, so we have to discharge into the river, and that's outside of our permit time. So that permit time starts November 1st, so we're actually storing from May 31st to November 1st. So that's what the lagoon systems are for. They're faculty, faculty, faculty creative lagoons, so there we go, close enough. And so those lagoons, when they get full, we have to notify DEQ that we're going to discharge early. When that happens, we usually get a letter from DEQ telling us that we're outside of our permit. We reply that we're aware of that, but due to not enough freeboard on the lagoons that we have to discharge, otherwise they could, if a lagoon goes over the side of the bank, it will inevitably erode the dike that's holding the sewage in storage, so that's not something no one knows. So we have what we call a controlled discharge, and that goes into the Willamette River. So this facility was identified as an option to building up those lagoons, and there's several advantages to that. One, lagoons take an incredible amount of acreage. They're probably sitting on close to 65, 70 acres right now with a total of 50 some odd acres in water. So in order to expand that, you'd actually have to either build more lagoons inside city limits, probably around their current location because that's where all the lift stations pump to. So that would take a valuable property inside city limits that's better suited for other uses. So it was identified to use irrigation as an option during the summertime when we have issues with capacity. So what that enables us to do is not increase the capacity of the lagoons per se at that site, but through the summer flow, we can irrigate actually from those lagoon systems as they fill up, and then that will keep the water level down until the wintertime when we can discharge into Willamette. It was the most cost-effective way after an analysis. And I got to say, a lot of these projects, there's a lot of paperwork and buildup, and it actually takes years to get to this point, so it's been a big victory for the city to get this far. And we're finally getting started, breaking ground. I can tell you DEQ's very happy. They know that we've been working on it for at least the past five years, very hard the last two years. We've broken ground on it now, and so that, in a nutshell.
And I think you also, I wanted to just remind you, I think there is, because the issues of trying to discharge warm into the river so that we don't have to deal, because there's limitations on warm water going into the Willamette River, and so we're avoiding some of those issues also, if I recall correctly.
That is correct. There's a number of criteria that your wastewater has to meet by the time it gets to the Willamette, and as you can imagine, during the summertime, temperature is not one we can control, so...
Thank you for taking the time. Mr. Passamere, did you want to add?
Yeah, I do want to add one thing because I want to make sure there isn't any confusion down the road. So this is the first part of this project. We've actually broken this project up into two pieces, so what you're seeing before you is really the conveyance system to get from the lagoons out to the fields, make sure that the infrastructure is there for the farmer to be able to use the irrigation. But we're going to be coming back with another portion of the project, which is actually to do a little bit of increase of the well for this, for the electrical systems, for the pumping systems, for the other stuff that needs to happen. So I don't want you to think that this is the entire project that you have before. We intentionally broke it up into two pieces so we could get the important piece done early with the weather and everything that we have going on, and then the control systems and the electrical and the pumps and all that stuff is going to be coming back to a later date. So while we save a significant amount of money, you know, from this conveyance estimate that we do, that's not the entire project, or there will be more to this project that comes to make this thing functional and operational. Kyle, you can add to that if you want.
Exactly, and some of that's identified on the map. This is to be constructed in 2020. That is that extension he's talking about.
Additional questions for any of the staff people?
The speaker had a comment about the farmer's benefit of responsibility here. I mean, obviously, we're going to save money because we're not going to have to build another lagoon, but what part does the farmer play in all this other than getting water for his field?
What part does he play? So he's changing crop into a more irrigation-friendly crop. I believe it's fescue, and I'm not sure what variety. After that, he has an agreement to take so much water per year, and then he has the option to purchase water beyond that, right? And I do not believe, I'd have to look at the agreement, but I do not believe he is paying up to the mandated point, though. And as far as participation in the project, I don't believe other than he is granting us easements on his property that he's contributing to the cost of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
When does he need to have, be back in the field? You know, the date, the end of the contract?
October 15th. So he wants to be on the ground by October 15th.
And are we expected to be able to use this next summer?
Next fall.
Next fall, okay.
If there are no additional questions, this is an action item.
I move to authorize staff to utilize contingency funds from the state revolving loan in the amount of $109,000 to support the construction of the recycled water use facility.
Second.
No, motion second, discussion, are you okay? Thank you for the longer explanation of how and why, I appreciate that review. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Passamere, I think it's you.
So this item I talked about earlier, along with, these are the Polk Street properties which we're presenting to you and requesting that you declare those vacant. I will change the sentence in my staff report to say that Boise Cascade gave this for future city disposition, I'll cross that out and acknowledge that I was not hearing, didn't know, so I'll just say that they donated lots in 2007 and leave it at that. Currently, they are undeveloped lots, there are some parks in either direction but not as close as is for some residents. Right now, the economy is good for residential, so it would be a good time, we're seeing high value for residential lots in general, some of the highest we've seen probably in a long time or ever, and as long as the economy stays strong, that will probably continue. So really, this is an option for you, this is something for your consideration, we can move forward with this, we could not move forward with this, but there will certainly be other steps in the process. So if we, if you were to authorize us to, these lots to be surplus and authorize me to start marketing them, once we actually got to the point of negotiating and finalizing a sale, we would actually have to come back to council for a couple of things. One is to have a public hearing, the other is to make sure it's properly noticed according to state law, and then also to get approval of any conditions that we may want to put on the property to make sure that it transacted and was developed in a way that was acceptable to the city. These properties do have a significant value up to them, I don't really have a hard cost on that, but I think it's safe to say that it's in excess of $100,000 easily for these properties. And really, this is for you to consider and decide whether you want to move forward for it, so your options are to surplus the property and advertise it to negotiate for sale, surplus the property to put weight on the sale to market it, or just decide not to do anything on the surplus of this property this time. So I will let you determine.
Can I ask a process question? Do I need to declare a public hearing on the issue of turning this property surplus? Because I know we have to, do I need to?
Not at this point, we would need to do that.
Do that before, if we did a sale?
Before the sale.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss the key part. Do council members have questions for the staff presenter? Okay, I don't see any questions for, discussion, what do you folks want to do before we get into motions and stuff like that? What are people's thoughts? Do we want to do this, yes or no? What are you thinking?
Well, I think it'd be a good way to help offset the cost of possibly moving the museum, so I'd be interested in doing that. And I know there was, we, there was some talk a few years ago about, you know, well, maybe there should be a park somewhere in that area. I recall there was quite a few people that said, no, we don't want a park here, we've got parks, you know, in both, in three different directions that aren't too far away, so that's, and it isn't part of our parks master plan, so I'm not sure what else we would do with that property.
Other thoughts?
I'm leaning towards option two. Surplus, but wait to sell. I didn't hear the question. And I'm a no.
And what, she said she was in favor of option two, which option two is surplus the property but wait to sell it. You want to, could you, what is your thinking there?
I want to see how the museum process moves out.
Kathy, you want to?
Well, I'm just kind of concurring with Counselor Cor there that that might be an appropriate course of action.
Other thoughts? Anybody else have any other thoughts? Please.
I think this is a wise move to make at this time to not only surplus but put the property up for sale. It eases budget restrictions if we have future movement on the museum, and I think it's best and highest use at this point.
Anybody else have anything else? Michael? Michael, please do.
I just feel like if we have budget concerns about the museum, maybe we should back off on that.
Okay.
Um, just so even if we advertise it for sale, it still has to come back to us anyways, right? So I don't, I don't quite understand, um, the benefit to waiting to sell.
I guess, I guess I would also say that, um, it's a pretty hot market now. Um, who knows what's going to happen, you know, in a month, two months, whatever. I'd rather put it on the market now, I think.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? Say, okay. Somebody suggest action, please. Somebody?
Are we moving it towards the resolution?
Uh, it's whatever count, whichever council would like to do.
I move that resolution number 19 dash 1510 be adopted as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Is there discussion on this? And that, and that's, um, that's option one?
Yes.
That's option one.
That is the way I understand it.
And my understanding.
Yeah, that, I just wanted to make sure we're all okey dokey, fine. Okay. Is, I'm getting echoed. Sorry. Um, I'll try not to talk loud. Um, voice of God. Um, okay. Since there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Uh, we have four yeses and dissenting was Councilor Corr and, uh, Council, and Councilor Jennifer Renssman Smith. Okay. Motion carries for the two.
So I just want to make sure that everybody knows I heard from council that there is definitely a correlation between the timing of the museum and this property. So I will keep that in mind as we, as we move this forward. I'll keep in mind too, the, the market conditions, but, um, certainly we're not going to take this money and put it in the general fund and, and spend it somewhere else. It will be tied to, um, a building project.
Great. Appreciate the conversation here. Uh, let's continue moving, uh, forward. Would you like to deal with the next one? Think you get that one too.
I do. So, um, so this item is relative to memorandum of agreement, um, just to create a development council for the continuum of care. So I'm just going to kind of explain this a little bit. Um, we've had conversations before, um, about the continuum of care here. Certainly, uh, we had a joint meeting with Monmouth, uh, to kind of talk about, um, what was going on in the Marion and Polk County regions relative to efforts to work with homeless and to continue, to consider breaking off from, from the, uh, rural area and continuum of care organization. And this is kind of the next, uh, step in the process. So essentially, um, when you saw this last, it was a resolution, uh, to, um, to support, uh, uh, moving forward with that concept. And this is really starting to put some of the pieces in place. So the final, um, organization and governance structure that is going to end up, um, managing the continuum of care is, is, um, pretty complex. It's going to entail a lot of local governments. It's going to entail, um, you know, nonprofits. It's going to entail people in, in all sorts of different sectors. And it's a fairly large group that will need to meet all the federal requirements and, um, all, all the, uh, the necessary pieces in order to manage, uh, the continuum of care for, for both counties. And so that's, that's a pretty big deal. But in order to get from where we are today to there, we need to create, um, a development council, which basically will put all of that organization, uh, pieces into place, figure out how that organization is going to, to run, how the, the bylaws and just all of that process, it's going to need to be there to create that. So this really is a memorandum of agreement. It's largely consists of, um, the, uh, the local governments that were in the Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative. Um, it also includes some nonprofit members who are large partners, um, that would need to make sure that their voice is heard during the process. Um, and it, uh, it does, uh, take the monies which we had put into the Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative for this year, that five thousand dollars that moves it over to this development council. Um, there would be a future commitment of five thousand dollars next year for us to be a part of that. Um, we've kind of played a leading role along with Monmouth and Salem and Kaiser and Marion County and kind of getting this to this point. We need to kind of broaden that out. We need to get more specific and we need to work really hard to get that, um, that, uh, governance structure set up in a way that this can be successful for the long run. So it's, it's pretty, um, I think important that, that this is done well, uh, so that, um, so that this can get off to a great start. The continuum of care will have a fairly significant amount of money that comes into it, uh, for, um, for Marion County, but also for Polk County, uh, which will support our efforts, uh, as we deal with homeless issues. So with that, um, description, really this is, uh, largely, um, for your information. Um, I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to see it and make sure that you understood the funding commitments moving forward. Um, I highly recommend that we continue to move forward and continue to be leader, um, in this area. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's an area where, um, I think the city has done a good job, uh, in the past, and I think we can play an important role in the future, making sure that this works for us.
Before we go, I, let, let me interrupt for a moment. Uh, I've excused, uh, Councilor Renssman Smith. She has a family emergency going on and she informed me just, it just happened. So, uh, she's excused from the rest of the meeting. Please go ahead with your question.
Um, when we originally had the joint meeting, I thought, wasn't there talk of maybe, um, Yamhill joining?
There was. Um, and, uh, at that point in time, there were a number of cities in Yamhill County that wanted to join. Uh, there are still a number of cities in Yamhill County that I think want to join. Um, but the county isn't quite on board yet. However, we did leave flexibly inside this agreement for them to come on board if they want to. They'll probably have to do it sooner rather than later though, because once, once we get too far in the process, the process will probably have to finish up and then they could end up joining later.
Okay.
But it's certainly still, the door is still open for them if they want to. Um, they, they need to figure out what is in their best interest at this point.
Okay.
I know other elected officials have had conversations. I know that some of our mayor meetings and with commissioners and, uh, this is a strong good step forward. Are there additional questions for staff? Additional comments? This is an action item, please.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of agreement relating to the creation of a development council to form a continuum of care collaborative governance structure for the Marion and Polk County region.
Second.
I have a motion second. Discussion. There's a mouthful to read of them.
It was.
I hear no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, moving promptly forward. Hey, we're getting to see you a bunch tonight. Ninth Street Lift Station Consultation, Consultants Service Contract.
Ninth Street Lift Station is located on the north end of Ninth Street. I believe I provided a map with it circled.
Yes.
The wastewater, it's a wastewater pump station. It's, it was identified in the 2015 facilities plan as needing further analysis. So in 2017, staff took a look at that and when we hired our new engineer, um, West Tech Engineering, Steve Ward, who was here earlier, we requested, uh, that he do that analysis. The results were completed in 2019 and showed the lift station was nearing capacity. And given that the expansion of the urban growth boundary was in the area serviced by Ninth Street, uh, it requires some attention. The, most of the development going on in town as far as residential is in that very basin. So we don't want there to be any lack of service in that area. So we asked West Tech to provide a proposal for Ninth Street Lift Station, um, what the estimate would be cost for an upgrade and how far that would take us out. They provided us with that proposal, uh, which is in your packet. The staff has reviewed the proposal and agreed to the scope of work. Uh, the funds for the proposal would be coming out of the SRF loan fund. Um, and that's also identified in the capital improvement plan. I think it's number 15 in wastewater. So.
And this was also part of the budget process that we did?
Correct.
Okay. So that we, we already took a look at, I, I'm just confirming to folks so they know that, uh, these things have been, uh, thought about in advance, that we're not just getting these cold. Uh, this is all, was all part of the budget process that we went through, part of the plan. And this is the actual, uh, making it happen.
Yeah. The trail would be the 2015 facilities plan and then the basin, um, basically a, a relook at that basin. It was approved through council in 2018 and produced in 2019. And then we requested a proposal for those improvements recommended.
And then we had, and then we went through the budget process this spring, which this was included in.
Yeah, fair. I'll just add to that. So, uh, this was in the capital improvement plan as well, um, as the items in the capital improvement plan were presented in the budget. We did talk about these different projects as we, uh, with the budget committee and with council. And now we're just at that point where we're, um, taking the monies that we appropriated in the budget and actually bringing them to projects that we're, we're actually moving for.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I did not do it as eloquently. Are there good additional questions, uh, for staff at this point?
One thing I would like to clarify-
Please do.
It's, uh, for construction in the 2021. So we're doing the design now, so it can be constructed in the 2021.
Great. Additional questions? If not, again, we have another action item. If someone would make a motion, please.
I move to approve a contract with West Tech Engineering in the amount of $78,300 for engineering services for the Ninth Street Pump Station.
A motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Everybody okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Passamere, final item of the evening.
We've gotten a lot done tonight. So this is the final item of the evening and, uh, before you is for a consideration of, um, adopting a resolution, um, relative to declaring, uh, sidewalks adjacent and abating to 240 Mama Street a nuisance and directing, uh, repair of the sidewalks. I talked about this, uh, earlier in my report, so I'm not going to go back through everything. But I would like to talk about, uh, the process a little bit, uh, moving forward. Um, I mentioned that, uh, given the duration sidewalks not being available and the high amount of pedestrian traffic, um, we believe there's imperative that we get this work done, um, soon, um, and get, uh, the, uh, the sidewalks, um, finished by the property owner or through the abatement process, whichever. This resolution basically sets out, um, the conditions for, for that to happen. So, uh, within five days of passage of this, uh, resolution, we will send a notice, uh, to the, uh, property owner, um, who's on the tax rules to, to make sure that they understand that this was, uh, passed. Uh, we also, uh, are giving them 60 days, um, in order to, to make those repairs. Um, I don't know if they will be able to. We'll certainly have those conversations to see. Um, there's still some design work that needs to be done. There's still, uh, permits that need to be obtained from ODOT and from the city. I suspect that will take a little, uh, some time anyway. Um, so essentially if, uh, it isn't accomplished within, uh, 60 days, then the city would, um, work on abating, uh, the sidewalk and making sure that there is a safe passage. Uh, we would probably, uh, finish up the permitting process, um, for, uh, the plans and then, um, do the construction of it. It's going to be a fairly expensive project, um, just given the amount of sidewalk and the design of, of the, uh, infrastructure that is necessary there. Um, I will mention, I did not put in my staff report, um, so I want to make sure I covered it. Um, I covered it earlier, but, uh, this monies are not in the budget. Um, so if we are to do, move forward with the abatement, the city is spending monies, we would have to, um, come back probably with a, a budget transfer or a supplemental budget in the future in order to, to make that happen. Um, so, um, with that, um, this is a resolution for your consideration. I, I believe the, the property owner is here, um, if you have questions. But, uh, I, um, highly recommend that we, um, get this situation taken care of as quickly as possible. And I think at this point, that's probably the best way in order to go about it.
Mr. Seize, did you want to say anything since you're sitting here?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. Are there questions for, uh, for staff at this point?
Yes.
Please do.
All sorts of them.
All right. We're going to just start at the left and work right.
Okay.
Councilor Corr.
I appreciate that this is being called a nuisance, but this is really a safety hazard. I mean, it's a bus stop out there. I worry about people standing out there.
Yeah. I'm using that word because it's a specific word in the code-
Probably a technical term.
And that, that needs to be set. So I agree, it's, it's a hazard. It's a safety issue. It's a nuisance.
Okay. So you earlier mentioned that, uh, the proceeds from the sale of the building had not been allocated to anything. So those funds are still there that couldn't be utilized?
So yeah, they're sitting in the general fund as additional ending fund balance. They were, um, allocated in last year's, uh, budget, which ended July 1st.
Right. Cause I know we assumed we would be rebating the money anyways.
Right. We didn't. And so we did not appropriate those monies for, for that additional 300,000 because it would have really thrown things off in the budget for one, but, um, two, we actually expected actually to be done with it by then.
Right. So even though it is not a budgeted item, there are some funds available to assign to the project.
That's correct. Yeah.
That's the clarification I'm looking for.
Essentially it would come out of the, yes. It would come out of the ending fund balance.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Morton?
Yes. You mentioned earlier the $300,000 rebate that would go back to the property owner if performance was, was completed on sidewalks?
Yeah. So it was broken into two components. $100,000 for the sidewalks and $200,000 for the building. That rebate, um, period ended, um, a few weeks ago.
And it's off the table now unless council were to approve something different?
Yeah. We would have to renegotiate another commitment.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Next. Council take us?
Good.
You're good?
Good.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay. Um, this is an action item.
I move to adopt resolution number 19 dash 1512, a resolution declaring a certain hazardous sidewalk a nuisance and directing improvements.